What is he, yes? I'm the new network director. It feels that way, right? So as soon as I was one year with the VISN and then had to spend another year with Central Office, so that's the reason why now I'm finally back and I'm very, very happy to be back. But I'd like to actually take this opportunity first to pause for a moment of silence and this is for one of our fellow employees, Dr. Jennifer Gonzalez. And if you are not familiar with what happened to Dr. Jennifer Gonzalez, she is one of our psychologists who actually was shot at the Youngville State Veterans Homes. So she's one of the three casualties of the shooting. So let's pause for a moment of silence. Thank you very much and let's keep her and her family in our thoughts and prayers. It's a reminder for us that one of the things, you know, in order to honor her memory is to focus our energy on mental health and making sure that our own mental health as well as the veterans that we serve, that we dedicate ourselves to make sure that we have that particular emphasis. Because unfortunately, there is that reality of mental health disease, particularly with all the stresses that are happening around us. Now, the next thing that I'd like to talk about is the hearing yesterday. The House Veterans Affairs Committee actually decided to hold a field hearing and they do that on occasion and it's becoming more frequently, actually. We had a Manchester hearing not too long ago and then now we have a San Juan hearing. And the focus of the hearing is actually what happened during the hurricane, you know, regarding the provision of healthcare. So first, I'd like to congratulate, who among you actually spent the hurricane here? Well, thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank you because without your dedication and commitment, it would have been impossible to provide the care that the veterans need at that time and that was recognized in the hearing. You know, Dr. Rowe actually made a point to say that without the 800 or so staff who actually showed up for work, you know, it would have been impossible for us to provide the care. And again, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for your dedication and commitment to making sure that happens, that we're all here, that you're all here providing the care to our veterans. It is remarkable, I was in Central Office and I was hearing all of the, you know, we had a call the whole morning, you know, hour by hour, we were actually following and tracking what was going on and it is remarkable the work that you have all done. It's an example of how we pull together because we have a specific mission in mind and when that happens, when we pull together, there is a lot of power and energy that can be done and there's a lot of results that can come out of that. And again, thank you. Part of the hearing also was to discuss several things, you know, and one of the things that, in the last two hours, you know, I was with the Veterans Service Organization and we were talking about their perception of the things that are happening, particularly in San Juan. So what is the perception that was brought up there? You know, first of all, is a chronic understaffing. It's a perception. Now, we don't have the slides, right? You know, one of the things that we actually do every year, particularly during the budgeting season, you know, that is before the beginning of the fiscal year, is to look at the FTE across the VISN and to look at the number of veterans served. And when you look at the number of veterans served in the FTE, you come up with a ratio. So the number of FTE to serve every thousand veterans. And that is really what we peg the staffing level to be. San Juan has a FTE of 58 per thousand veterans served. It is the highest in the VISN and the highest in the nation. So the number of FTE per 1,000 is the highest in the nation, which is 58. West Palm is about 42. North Florida, South Georgia, is about 38, a number of FTE per thousand. Now, it does not necessarily mean, please don't get me wrong, because the Veterans Service Organization said, "So then that means that you're inefficient, your staff are inefficient and you need to cut." That's not what it is, right? That's not what I'm saying. What I'm just saying is that we cannot, in San Juan at least, we cannot claim understaffing, right? The reason is because that's the highest in the nation. So let us get that out of the way because the data will not support that. I mean, now, can we be more efficient in other areas? Can we reallocate staffing now? That's an administrative issue, right? Reallocating staffing to areas where you need them most is really an administrative function at this particular point and it's incumbent on your leadership to make those decisions. But we're not cutting, you know, we're not saying, "Well, you need to lose 400 in order to be in line with the rest of the country." We're not even saying that. What we're just saying is that it will be unfair to cause apprehension among our veterans when the data is not supported, right? Saying this will not make it true, right? Saying that we're chronically understaffed will not make us understaffed because it is 58 per 1,000 and that is the information. But what we can effectively happen, and this is a discussion that I was having with the Veterans Service Organization, is that our veterans will not feel that they're cared for because they're saying, "Oh, no, I don't have the number of staff that is required to care for me," right? We're just causing unnecessary apprehension when the information is untrue. So I had a discussion with the Veterans Service Organization regarding that because let us make sure that there is some stability that we project because that's what it is. We have the most number of staff in terms of thousand veterans that we serve. And that's not a bad thing, you know. That is one thing that we at this particular point should celebrate, but let us not spread untrue things. The data is what it is, you know, that is, and I cannot, you know, it will be unfair. It will cause unnecessary apprehension to our veteran population. Now, the thing that I'd like to actually make sure that we're not doing here but I've seen done in many medical centers is that when you're not making rounds and they just don't notice that I'm there, they say, "Oh, I cannot take care of you right now because we're understaffed." You know, we should not ever, it should never, ever come out of our mouths. And why is that? We have already effectively told the veteran, "We're not going to be taking care of you now" and expect bad service, right? Because that's what we're trying to tell them, right? The staffing is not their problem. The staffing that day is not the veteran's problem. It is our problem. You know, we need to solve the staffing that day and there is no reason why we're sharing our problems with the veterans. So please, you know, if you hear any of your coworkers saying that, gently correct them. You know, respectfully correct them and say, "Well, this is not the veteran's problem. It is our problem." Because what we're effectively telling them is that, "Don't expect good service from me today," right? I said that is a good excuse. There is never a good excuse for poor service, right? So no matter how we say that, you know, even if we, you know, say it nicely, there is no nice way of saying, "I, you know, I cannot take care of you right now because we're understaffed." So let us have a, because that's the one that they're getting. That's the information, you know, and then they go to their Veterans Service Organization and then now they say, "Well, the medical center in San Juan is understaffed despite the fact that it is the highest ratio of FTE per 1,000." So let us actually be, and that happens everywhere. I mean, I'm not just talking about San Juan. I've not seen that in San Juan. But I'm telling you that, you know, I've seen that repeatedly in other medical centers and I know that is what the veterans are picking up on. So let us just be graciously, respectfully correct each other whenever we hear that because there is, no, again, I am very passionate about this and you probably noticed I have repeated it three times. They say, "If you repeat it three times, people will remember." Let us make sure that we get that across, you know. Staffing is never the veteran's problem. It is our problem and there's really no point in sharing with them our problems, right? We talk to our supervisors. We talk to IRIS when there is a nursing staffing problem but we never talk to the veteran because the veteran cannot do anything about staffing reallocation that day, right? It's your supervisors that can actually solve that problem that day. So let us be in agreement that that is how we're going to be dealing with that. Let us never, ever hear that spoken in the presence of veterans. The next thing that I'd like to talk about is the recovery. Because there's a lot of things that happened during the hurricane season, we are at this particular point just recovering. And when we're recovering, there's a lot of things that are happening. Guess what? What's happening is that, you know, we have lots of veterans to reschedule, right? 23,000 canceled appointments. We have already rescheduled 21,000 and this is really because of the efforts of your schedulers and the providers who have made sure that, you know, their slots are available and thank you to everyone for making that happen. But there will be other things that will be coming up, you know, and we will have to refocus our energy and I know that this is going to be a joint effort from everyone and I'd just like to thank everyone in defense because of the hard work that you all still need to do in order to recover from what is happening in order to recover from what has happened. And again, you know, this speaks to your resilience as a group and your commitment and dedication and again, I'm truly very appreciative of that. The other thing too that was brought up during the hearing is actually the scarcity of physicians. You probably saw that on the news, right? You saw, yeah, you all saw that on the news. And these are the facts. The facts are, San Juan never really experienced a primary care deficiency. This is not, I cannot say that in Florida, you know, because in Lee County, for example, which is a big outpatient clinic in the south of Florida, out of the 12 PAC teams, they only have five physicians and they need 12. You know, I just received an email today saying that in the next month or so they'll have three more addition to their PAC providers. So you're talking about, you know, after two or three months, you know, they'll have eight out of the 12 providers that they needed. So you can just imagine that this is a problem in Florida but this is not a problem in San Juan. Primary care is not a problem in San Juan. Mental health psychiatrists. We have shortages all across Florida and fortunately, again for San Juan, that is not the issue regarding psychiatrists. You graduate psychiatrists and they'd like to stay here in the medical center to work. You know, so you're in a very, very good position regarding primary care and psychiatrists. Now, there are subspecialties and specialists that we cannot recruit in San Juan. But the interesting thing is, this is what I learned yesterday from Dr. Ramos, and I forgot his title. He's the,
President.
President of the Society, right?
College of Physicians.
Yes, of the College of Physicians in Puerto Rico. Out of the 400 cardiologists, you know, in the past two to three years, the island now has only 100. There is a 75% reduction in specific specialties in the island. Now, we are in the same market. You know, we're recruiting from the same pool of cardiologists that are in the Commonwealth, right? And unfortunately, we cannot do much about that, you know. What can we do? We can offer educational debt reduction, you know. We will pay $120,000 over the course of five years for physicians to join us and we will do that. We will actually, we will set aside, you know, there are 110 positions that are funded centrally in Central Office and I will actually increase the number of positions that will be VISN-funded for the educational debt reduction because we will promise to Puerto Rican doctors who would like to practice with us that we will pay $120,000 over five years. And we have always looked at the salaries and this is the interesting thing. The salaries in San Juan is not lagging behind the salaries in Florida. And we have transparencies. We will even post that, you know, so everybody, or at least known to the service chiefs regarding the salaries of physicians in Florida and physicians in Puerto Rico. Because we need to be very transparent. We need to actually say that we're recruiting physicians. We want the physicians not to move to Florida and the way to do that is we will actually be having a comparable pay. Now, there are other reasons why physicians move except for their, aside from their salaries, correct? Because their spouses may not have the work here in Florida. They're being offered work in the mainland and they can easily find jobs themselves in the mainland. Now, those are things that, and I was reminded by the Veterans Service Organizations, for six months, there's been no electricity. And that's another reason why people move. So that is unfortunately nothing that we can do about it, right? The VA cannot do anything about the other conditions but we can make sure that our pay will be comparable. So we will make sure that we will use educational debt reduction and we will make sure that, you know, everything else will be comparable in order not to entice physicians to move to Florida. Now, I can only promise what we can do to physicians. I cannot promise what we, you know, the other things, the other tangible and intangible things that they consider for moving, such as their spouses or their children or other things in consideration, you know. But our salaries will be comparable. Now, Miami and West Palm salaries are higher than the rest of Florida and I expect that it will continue to be even higher than San Juan. Why? Because the standard of living in those areas are really, it takes about 30% more money to buy a comparable home in Miami and in West Palm in comparison to the rest of Florida. So that's the reason why we consider that even the nurses are paying more. Now, they're all going to move to Miami and West Palm. But remember, remember, the reason why we're paying them more is because in the end, you will just be about even out. The reason is because to live in Miami and West Palm, it will require more money. Even, I don't even go to the restaurants there because they're a lot more expensive in comparison to Tampa. So just to give you an idea of the standards of living in West Palm and Miami. Okay. Now, let's talk about your difficulties. What are the things that you wanted the VISN to be aware of so that we can come at a solution? I know parking was a problem here back in November, right? I thought there was a mutiny regarding parking. And I think that the leadership was actually quite apologetic about miscalculating the number of parking spots that they have to give up on the other, across the street and so they have corrected that now. So are there still parking issues?
Yes.
Yes, there's still parking issues, okay. So you're still not having enough spaces on the, across the street? Is it AMA? Are you still having trouble parking at AMA?
Not enough space.
Not enough space, okay. So I'll bring that up again, to make sure that we have enough parking space. Anything else?
Space here.
Yes, space here, yeah. That's an issue. There is a space deficit in San Juan and part of the issue is the medical center is landlocked, right? There is no other, now, for the first time, we heard an offer from the Commonwealth to give out 4.5 acres of space, which is at the psychiatric hospital, you know, where the methadone clinic is and then just across that space where the psychiatric hospital is located. The Commonwealth is offering up 4.5 acres. So that will give us an upper well. The first thing that they wanted to do is, this is their request, is to build a Fisher house on that property. So the Fisher house will occupy about an acre so that that will allow us some, if they donate the entire 4.5 acres, it will allow us to have a little of leeway. Now, there are certain things that we need to be looking for in acquiring the space, for example. Whether it's a, first of all, whether it's a suitable space and there are no toxic, yeah, there are no toxic, in the ground level sometimes, what happens is that there are, yes, the Superfund, the cleanup, there's sites for Superfund cleanup and that's the reason why they're giving them up. When you get, when you're offered free land, you always wonder why they're offering free land so there's sometimes a little bit of a problem there. But we will completely vet that because like I've said, not everything that is free is actually good, you know. But we will make sure that that is actually a suitable place and then we'll have to look at other areas regarding where we're going to be expanding. The Veterans Service Organizations are wanting to make sure that we consider long-term care and that is one of their requests and there are like a priority of areas. We know that we have to build an RRTP, Residential Rehabilitation Treatment Program. We are actually approved for that and we need to actually identify a site. So that's one thing. A long-term care will be under consideration and other location and space for the facility. We're also looking at partnering with the DOD in Fort Buchanan because that's another one that is, at this point, sharing with us that they are going to be willing to share a space. So they're donating also space at Fort Buchanan and we will appropriately look at all of these options for us so that we can identify what services we can move and what are the partnerships that we can actually try to accomplish with DOD. Okay, aside from space, any, yes sir? I will. Let me, let me talk about telework. There are occupations that cannot telework, right? Direct patient care, of course. One thing that you cannot telework. But to me, you know, if there are positions in the hospital that can be accomplished by teleworking, they should be teleworking. The reason is because that decompresses the space and then that, the other thing that is required, of course, is making sure that there is a way of monitoring work performed. You know, because that's the one that, you know, for us to act, the output for the day is fulfilled, it's capable, it's a position that can be achieved through telework. It should happen that way. But that's me now. There are supervisors that are very uncomfortable with telework and I think that it is our job to make them comfortable, right? For as long as we have a solid performance plan. So I'm not promising anything but we will look into that. I think that if you're asking me, I'm not going to be the one that will obstruct telework. But again, you know, this is a negotiation with a supervisor because they're the ones who are actually responsible to make sure that you're doing what you're doing. Because if I handicap them by telling them, "This is how you're going to do this," I cannot hold them responsible for the work of their unit, you see? The supervisor should be, should have the ability to make a decision because I'm holding them responsible. But if I interfere in that process, I cannot hold them responsible. Does that make sense? Yeah, so that's the, this is the rule that I always follow. I don't, I don't care, not that I don't care. I just don't pay attention to whom they hire, the kind of processes that they put in their workplace but I hold them responsible for the results that they come up with. So is that a fair? Okay, good.
If you want to, if you want to telework, you should stay with me.
I appreciate you being here today and thank you for all the things you've done and you came to the CISO and we underwent a lot of hardship but we're working hard to get our work done. Regarding the salaries that you mentioned that are comparable with Florida, I checked them, looking for all the physicians also.
Yes.
Exploring them, nonetheless, I wanted to move but considering all of them.
Yes.
And I see that they're comparable but I do not know if the VISN knows that our cost of living is higher because of our political and geographical position. I don't even know that we have a sales tax of 11.5%.
I saw that.
Do you pay state income tax? Besides that, we are in a high,
Bracken?
Bracken. We do pay federal tax and now with the new tax reform, we're going to be paying more federal tax. We, our utilities are much higher than these days. A car, any car, not a luxury car, any car costs here like $10,000 to $12,000 more than this.
20% more.
Really?
Yes.
Well, on the television says the least, there's that too much. Just kidding. I saw that last night. I was telling myself, "Oh, okay." No, that's not bad.
Our educational system is collapsing and I'm sure that most of us pay private schooling and we pay from $10,000 to $12,000 a year in the metro area for valuable schools. And the houses, maybe the market is great for buying now but us, we have houses that are like, as we call, under the water. We paid a lot of money. The value has gone down. We're stuck with our mortgages.
Dr. Sanchez told me that, yes.
And we cannot sell them. We're going to sell the house. We need to pay them. So those things I would like the VISN to know and take that into consideration because even though the salaries are comparable, our expenses are way higher.
Okay. Okay. I, it, and, and what I'm going to do is I'm gonna ask them how they calculate for the, for the cost of living and the locality and, uh, so we can confirm, I mean, or at least do whatever we're doing the rest of the country and apply that to Puerto Rico. So it's...
It's that, uh, because we're a Commonwealth, uh, there's this law where everything that comes to Puerto Rico has to go first to the states and then from the states she fed to the people. That's why everything that's here is higher, see?
Right.
Even the, we, we go here, go to here, have to go to the states from back and then come back. It's illogical.
That's interesting, okay, okay. But we, we will look into that. I think that, um, you know, we will make sure that that is, um, taken into consideration.
Are you buying to go over here, stay here for a month? I pay you two days for a month, so...
Yes.
Doctor, I think it's unfair, but, but, um, you look into the physicians, but look into the home hospital and, and see, how is it fair enough for our all employees?
Absolutely, yes. Now, we, we will look across the board. Including us. You're the biggest, you're the biggest workforce, by the way.
The mechanism that they have right now is that they serve to see what other institutions around the area are making, but it's always gonna be on top, so it's really unfair, especially for the nursing staff, because we did have a big migration of nurses going out to Florida throughout the United States and it was really because of the amount of money and the possibility that much money here, um, coming in the United States.
Um, no, good point.
Can I say something that Laura's saying in social world, we have been, social world who are losing them to a facility, mostly in Florida, they hope they can work and, and Orlando is a really good competition.
Yes, uh...
And that is the, the reason why.
Yes, and, and that's, that's a good point, the, the, from Orland- Orlando up, the standard of living is actually not as high as from Orlando down, so that's the reason why a lot of people are moving around Orlando area. Uh, you can still buy, um, about thirty minutes away from the center of Orlando, um, a very nice house for probably a third of what you pay here in Puerto Rico. So that's a, uh, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars home is a very nice home around that area within thirty, thirty minutes away. And, anything else, yes, sir?
Yes, sir. Going back to the first topic you used, presented this morning regarding the ratio per, uh, thousand patient, uh, does that ratio include like all employees or...
Oh, yes, yes.
So have, have you made an emphasis based on disciplines, like for example, the largest workforce here is nursing?
Yes.
Have you made that ratio in terms to find out if it's, uh, real?
The focus.
No, I, yeah, just for transparency, yours is actually on the, uh, so, like, on a direct line, the reason is because when we're comparing, uh, we're comparing RN ratio per one thousand and it is higher in San Juan. Now, so that's the reason why, uh, she is in a position to actually defend that, I mean, and, um...
The complexity of our patients, of course, is higher, so, so that's where we defend and support the, the reason why we have the reason on the bar.
Because sometimes it will feel like we're on the, really on the down, the, uh, comorbidity, mortality and so many other complications, um, take, needs to take into consideration the level of cares that we're providing.
We, we do that, we, we, we actually adjust for the case of area index, for example, and, uh, we can show the calculations regarding, but again, you know, it is not, and, and comparison is always very diff- different from one, one medical center to the next and it's very difficult to actually make a comparison, um, but I, I am confident that, that the staffing ratio in San Juan is actually a very, very good staffing ratio, let's put it that way, you know, um, in, in all areas. The reason is because, you know, um, we, we have actually sliced and diced this in many different ways and it's, it, and it's coming up higher, uh, among the facilities in Florida and among national, uh, you know, so when you're making a comparison across the United States and, uh, but there is, again, you know, like, in fairness, it's very difficult to compare, the reason is because, um, there are certain things, uh, that, 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 first of all, for example, um, the, um, the Baker Act, right? The four oh eight is a, so you're, you're actually required to keep, yeah, to keep the veterans longer when they're committed, you know, so, so that means that your, uh, average length of stay, particularly in the psychiatric, um, admissions will be longer. And, and when, when it's longer, then it requires a lot more intensity, you have more social work in order to actually, the discharge planning for them and then you will require more RN, so, so that's, that's a distinct, um, disadvantage, for example, the four oh eight, um, that is happening in the Commonwealth. The other thing too is that, um, the, the veterans, you know, like the use of hospice and palliative care, it's quite mature now in Florida, there's a lot of, a, a lot of our veterans that are opting for that. Veterans in San Juan would prefer still to die in the hospital. So, so that is again, a, a difference, so, so there are, there are things that you can explain why there will be higher intensity. So when you think about the ratio of running and, and acute care, uh, where, where veterans are dying, you know, versus running a hospice and palliative care or a home hospice in which you don't really, uh, have a lot of staffing, you know, that is altogether a very different ratio. So there's, there's many things that we can articulate why it's different, but I, what I'm just saying is that it is very difficult to actually say the facility is chronically understaffed, that is just simply not true. So, so let us, let us just be in agreement that, you know, it will be very difficult for any, any administrator here in San Juan to give a reason, um, why they consider the staffing level to be low in comparison to nationwide, because that's not the truth. The truth is it's highest in the nation. Any other question? Yes, sir?
Sir, you mentioned in the same line of palliative and hospice care, uh, probably one of the reasons for that, at least our perception, is the availability of hospice cares in the community.
Yes.
Very limited.
Correct.
And the level of care that they get in the community compared to what they get here is very different.
Right.
So they, I mean, I had this conversation with the wife this morning, uh, she is refusing to continue hospice care in the community, she wants to come here. And we have the perception, using the same language, that our veterans depend a lot more in our service because of lack of services in the community.
Correct.
Available for them in the whole island.
Yes.
Is there any data, uh, to compare the use of community services for, from veterans in other states, Florida versus in Puerto Rico that could validate that?
Yes, yes, I, there is, um, okay, like, um, uh, the, the, the data, for example, is that the reliance, the reliance of community care is about, uh, thirty percent now, um, in, generally across the nation, you know, so some will be slightly lower, some will be slightly higher. You're actually lower on the lower range, so the reliance of the veterans on the community care is lower in San Juan. The reason is because, uh, first of all, uh, the services, availability of services in San Juan is actually higher than what you would get in the community, for example. So that is, that is the reason why there is a higher reliance on, on the medical center in comparison to the private sector. Now, that may not be always true in certain markets in the U.S., so, in the mainland. So that's the reason why, um, yes, I, clearly, that is one reason, uh, higher reliance, uh, on the medical center by the veterans here in San Juan.
Another needs that we have, uh, I know we have a very nice, beautiful, uh, outpatient additional project, but then the old building is really not a problem for patient care, it's old, you have thick ceiling, uh, there are many plans to remodel, but then we don't have the money to make those plans, uh, perfect. How can we get that support for, for the old building?
No, yeah, uh, and, and San Juan is going to get part of the hurricane recovery and, uh, will be getting quite a bit of, uh, NRM funding, uh, so we're just waiting, um, Congress is actually working on approving six trillion million dollars worth of, um, construction and, and we're expecting that there's a lot of the chronic issues, uh, like leak in the building that will be taken care of because of the NRM approval. So we're just waiting for the release of funding on some of those projects. Uh, now, the...
The old building has a mental health clinic.
Yes, I'm, we, we toured that, um, on Sunday, so, um, um, Doctors Rowe and Winstrop actually drew that, we, you know, yes, we, we are fully aware that that is a, that is a building, that is a area that needed, uh, upgrading.
Regarding the FTEs, do you guys take into consideration that, uh, for example, I, I manage a clinic, I'm just a clinic, and I have, uh, let's say, ten psychiatrists, ten FTEs, but of those ten FTEs, they're not full-time in patient care. They do academics, they do research, they do all other stuff, so the, I don't have ten FTE for patient care, is that taken into consideration?
Yes, uh, so when we talk about FTEs, they're not people, they're not bodies, they're like, the ones that occupying forty hours per week is one FTE.
The Alisibo Clinic is over on the, on the Los Fuentes, you talk about...
Yes, the Alisibo is actually covered, correct?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. All of you are aware of what's happening in Alisibo? Yeah, okay, good. We are working off a tent, the western shelters, so it is a, and, and, and the reason is because that's the only one that is at this particular point that can be made available, um, and we, we have an emergency lease, uh, that we're trying to get through and we're hoping that it can be awarded by the end of this month. Uh, well, it will take a while then, uh, for, for any existing building to be modified according to our specification, so, uh, we're hoping that sometime around December that we're, that we can get the Alisibo Clinic into something which is, um, more or less permanent, um, but that is a challenge for us, um, that, the whole, it's unfortunate that that whole location is, is, is very prone to flooding. And, and remember too, that this is an unprecedented flooding, well, it was not in the flood zone before, um, because this is like a, a flooding of like over one hundred years, right? The one that happened in Alisibo did not happen for over one hundred years and, and the, the way we track flooding flood zone is a hundred-year plane, so, so it did not hit the hundred-year plane, but it's, it's now clearly, uh, part of our one hundred-year plane because that has changed the landscape after the unprecedented flooding. Any other question? Yes, sir?
Yes, um, I'm, I'm not sure if I, I don't afford it, but, uh, I don't work for VA, I'm a patient and, uh, I would like to know if you would like to hear how the patients feel in the hospital.
Yes, sir?
Right now I feel like a cat reach, you know, a flock of birds dancing, you know, but, uh, I have had the opportunity here to see the many problems that the staff have and, uh, you know, we veterans are not easy to handle. And, uh, I really appreciate to know that many problems that they had and, uh, I understand why some of them, and I'm talking about the lower-level supervisors, have, uh, the way they treat us, you know?
The, the way they treat the patients?
Yes, yes, sometimes it's, uh, exemptions, but those exemptions, uh, goes around the hospital, goes around the veterans, and that veteran goes outside and set the hospital, you know, is like this, they generalize, and I'm sure that it's not the situation. However, I think that I'd appreciate when they say, "Thank you for your service, but I would like to have a neck share after that appreciation," and, and that, that is my point. I was, uh, one of the patients that, uh, had draws the, uh, electricity for five months, but I came here to the hospital, I was surprised, the way, uh, even doctors, I remember when they find me in, in the lobby with my, uh, oxygen tank, and he came to me and he said, "Hey, could you have an oxygen? Is there anything that can do for you?" And I was like, "But that, you know, uh, the good things, people never know, but the bad things, they got a whole sky." And, uh, I do not represent anything, I just represent myself and I want to thank you for this people.
Thank you very much.
And see if you can do something with the, uh, doors.
The door?
Yeah, it's not easy to, you know, pop in there and try find somebody to push the door for me. And there are many, many, many left, yes, to the watch.
Okay, all right, sir, yes, we, we will look into that.
Thank you.
I think that, um, we heard two things from the line reference of America, you know, uh, one is our, the, the papers. Apparently the papers deteriorated in, in such a short time after construction, within two months there is a deterioration in the papers, so they're not, now all uneven, so what happens is that if you're not a seeing veteran, you can actually trip, uh, so that's , uh, one thing that we will have to fix and, and focus. And then like what you said, the other things too are the doors, you know, because, um, they open towards the veterans and if you don't, if you're not seeing, then you can actually get hit by the door. So it's very similar to, and then the other thing is a wheelchair because then, um, but we will look at, uh, some of the buildings in the older side, uh, will be, you know, unfortunately, very difficult to correct unless we, we have a major renovation in those areas, the older buildings will be a little bit more difficult to correct. But I believe all of our newer ones are following ATA standards, right, Heinrich? Yeah, so, so we, the, the ones that you're encountering difficulties, uh, in are the ones that are older buildings, so we will have to make sure that, um, you know, when we're retro, when we're renovating them, that they, they, well, we have no choice actually, when we renovate them, that they all conform to ATA standards.
Um, you know, I'm, I'm worried about the ADA because I know the Congress is to be more liberal on the rules of the ADA and we don't know what's gonna happen.
No, no, sir, we follow a very rigorous ADA standards.
I know.
Yeah.
But there are Congress men that want to change.
Oh, to change that, um, okay, um...
I'm sorry.
Right now, right now, I can assure you that we follow a rigorous ADA standards and I don't know whether that will be changing, uh, depending on the sentiments of Congress, but, um, but hope not, I mean, that, um, so when we're, when we're renovating areas, we follow them very strictly.
No more, you're safe.
Yes, but even the... But even the existing ones, we probably have to have a Jaime, an evaluation on the.
We do have an accessibility committee.
Right.
Where we assess every single area and any issue of accessibility for the veterans or employees. We have a plan. And we would love you to join us as we part of that team because we welcome people and identify those areas for us.
Yes. But thank you for your input. Yes, sir?
You know, thank you for being here. And I'd like to just say for a minute because I have a lot of CLC staff here and I'd like to recognize.
I was about to say that. Yes. Well, I'd like to recognize the CLC staff for achieving a five star rating. Thank you very much. That's the first in the VIZN, by the way, so thank you. Yeah, the first and the.
I said it first.
Yes. Yes, sir?
Sir, when you were at the central office and I was asking this question, every time, sometimes we have employees, you know, they're working all the VAs and they're proud for, were here in Puerto Rico. And everyone says, "Oh, when we're there, we work different, okay?" Is there any plan, official plan to stand right across this across VA in terms about how to things? Because every, I mean, every facility do different things.
Yes, okay. Let, let, yeah, yeah, scheduling should be done across the system the same way, right? This is a test, by the way. Any schedulers here? Anybody who's a scheduler? There are no schedulers? Okay. Yeah, scheduling is only direct, is only done one time, one way, right?
Right.
Okay, so, so that is, that is across the system. Now, what are we doing, you know, as a VIZN? Because that's a, you're absolutely correct. We are looking at one by one, a little bit of standard, a lot of actually standardization. So we started with PACT. And the reason why we wanted to standardize PACT is because that's our foundation. You know, that's a foundation service. We have to be able to standardize PACT. And so there is like, you know, you're, most of you are probably not aware, there is a VIZN group that actually makes sure that that is more or less standardized across the VIZN. Right? Yeah. And, and we make sure that it is. The reason is because there's a monthly meeting with the VIZN regarding the progress and standardization of PACT. We're now trying to combine primary care and mental health. And in fact, I will be inviting, if they have not already received invitation, for all of the chiefs of mental health to actually go to the VIZN because that's the next step. The next step is how do we actually integrate primary care and mental health and standardize that process? So we can, we can, you know, part of the, like, for example, nursing protocols in primary care that is standardized across the VIZN. So if you, if you don't know it, that that is already standardized. We didn't start that way. We did that almost two years now. So almost two years we have standardized. So we're, we're standardizing the process at least in the VIZN. Now, why? The reason is because there are, that has a lot of different outcomes. When, when you don't standardize the process, the result of the work that you do is actually not the same, right? Now, just to tell you, in the almost two years that we've, we've been doing the PACT, what we have accomplished in the VIZN is that, as a hope, when you look at our star rating, anything that has anything to do with outpatient and primary care is actually at the best quadrant, you know, for the entire VIZN. And that is the product of standardization. So we are, so now, you know, we need to, to actually have the same process in mental health because that's the other, the outcomes in mental health is not quite the same. There's not a standardized outcomes across the VIZN yet. So that's the reason why we're in the process of inviting the primary care. So we're doing this little by little. The reason is because it is a huge project to actually do. I mean, primary care is a, we're already in our two year journey for primary care. Right, Dr. Garrido? Yes. But there is a lot of standardization already happening there. But I, yes, you're absolutely correct. Yes?
Yes, SPS is a very important service in this hospital. So they should be in consideration for our new space.
I see, okay. SPS, yes.
There is an FYAT, SPS and RN project are two for design and FY twenty for construction.
You got me all right. Anything else? All right, well, thank you everyone for joining us this morning. And again, I thank you for your dedication and service and for the wonderful work that you do for our veterans. Thank you.